Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024. Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024. It's with mixed feelings that I announce for the last time that this evening we will be led by It's with mixed feelings that I announce for the last time that this evening we will It's with mixed feelings that I announce for the last time that this evening we will It's with mixed feelings that I announce for the last time that this evening we will be led by our good friend and colleague, Promod Shaw, our village clerk, in the pledge be led by our good friend and colleague, Promod Shaw, our village clerk, in the pledge our good friend and colleague, Promod Shaw, our village clerk, in the Pledge of Allegiance. of allegiance. of allegiance.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
In the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, In the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, In the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one one nation, under God, in the best of the liberty and justice of all. one nation, under God, in the best of the liberty and justice of all. nation, under God, in the best of the liberty and justice of all. This evening, Trustee Pure Slovan will participate in the meeting but will not be voting. This evening, Trustee Pure Slovan will participate in the meeting but will not be This evening, Trustee Pure Slovan will participate in the meeting but will not be From what we understand from Illinois law, as it has been revised, if a trustee is out From what we understand from Illinois law, as it has been revised, if a trustee is out From what we understand from Illinois law, as it has been revised, if a trustee is out of town on non-business matters, they are not permitted to vote on items. of town on non-business matters, they are not permitted to vote on items. of town on non-business matters, they are not permitted to vote on items. If it were that somebody was out of town for business reasons, they would be permitted If it were that somebody was out of town for business reasons, they would be permitted If it were that somebody was out of town for business reasons, they would be permitted to devote and participate remotely. to devote and participate remotely. to devote and participate remotely. So on the advice of council, Trustee Pure Slovan this evening, with an abundance of So on the advice of council, Trustee Pure Slovan this evening, with an abundance of So on the advice of council, Trustee Pure Slovan this evening, with an abundance of caution, caution, will participate but will not vote on any items. caution, will participate but will not vote on any items. will participate but will not vote on any items. The meeting therefore will come to order and the clerk will please call the voting The meeting therefore will come to order and the clerk will please call the voting The meeting therefore will come to order and the clerk will please call the voting roll. roll. roll.
Trustee Sutker. Trustee Sutker. Trustee Sutker.
Here. Here. Here.
Trustee Robinson. Trustee Robinson. Trustee Robinson.
Here. Here. Here.
Trustee Coon. Trustee Coon. Trustee Coon.
Here. Here. Here.
Trustee Johnson. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Johnson.
Here. Here. Here.
Trustee Pure Slovan. Trustee Pure Slovan. Trustee Pure Slovan. Trustee Klein. Trustee Klein. Trustee Klein.
Here. Here. Here.
Mayor Van Dusen. Mayor Van Dusen. Mayor Van Dusen.
Here. 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 We do have an agenda. We do have an agenda. We do have an agenda. First item is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. First item is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. First item is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order. A motion is in order. A motion is in order. Trustee Coon, seconded by Trustee Sutker. Trustee Coon, seconded by Trustee Sutker. Trustee Coon, seconded by Trustee Sutker. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, call the roll, please. If not, call the roll, please. If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker. Trustee Sutker. Trustee Sutker.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Trustee Robinson. Trustee Robinson. Trustee Robinson.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Trustee Coon. Trustee Coon. Trustee Coon.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Trustee Johnson. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Johnson.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Trustee Klein. Trustee Klein. Trustee Klein.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen. Mayor Van Dusen. Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye. 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 The motion passes. The motion passes. The motion passes. This evening I think we are probably in the safest room in the country. This evening I think we are probably in the safest room in the country. This evening I think we are probably in the safest room in the country. And I suspect the reason for that is the swearing-in of our new police chief. And I suspect the reason for that is the swearing-in of our new police chief. And I suspect the reason for that is the swearing-in of our new police chief. Is Chief Baker with us? Is Chief Baker with us? Is Chief Baker with us? I thought Chief Baker, Chief Scarpelli is with us this evening. I thought Chief Baker, Chief Scarpelli is with us this evening. I thought Chief Baker, Chief Scarpelli is with us this evening. Is Deputy Chief Ashler here? Is Deputy Chief Ashler here? Is Deputy Chief Ashler here? He comes to quite a few of the swearings in. He comes to quite a few of the swearings in. He comes to quite a few of the swearings in. And Deputy Chief Denise Franklin, I thought I saw. And Deputy Chief Denise Franklin, I thought I saw. And Deputy Chief Denise Franklin, I thought I saw. There we go. There we go. There we go. Denise, welcome. Denise, welcome. Denise, welcome. This evening, our clerk will do the honors and swear in our new police chief, Jesse This evening, our clerk will do the honors and swear in our new police chief, Jesse This evening, our clerk will do the honors and swear in our new police chief, Jesse Barnes. Barnes. Barnes.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
State your name. State your name. State your name.
Jesse Barnes. Jesse Barnes. Jesse Barnes.
Having been appointed to. Having been appointed to. Having been appointed to.
Having been appointed to. Having been appointed to. Having been appointed to.
The office of police chief. The office of police chief. The office of police chief.
The office of police chief. The office of police chief. The office of police chief.
In the village of Skokie. In the village of Skokie. In the village of Skokie.
In the village of Skokie. In the village of Skokie. In the village of Skokie.
In the county of Cook. In the county of Cook. In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook. In the county of Cook. In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of the state of Illinois. Constitution of the state of Illinois. Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of police chief. Of police chief. Of police chief.
Of police chief. Of police chief. Of police chief.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Chief, congratulations. Chief, congratulations. Chief, congratulations.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
You've done yeoman service for the village of Skokie and we all know, and we're all You've done yeoman service for the village of Skokie and we all know, and we're all You've done yeoman service for the village of Skokie and we all know, and we're all proud that you're going to be our new police chief. proud that you're going to be our new police chief. proud that you're going to be our new police chief. Would you introduce your family and friends who are here? Would you introduce your family and friends who are here? Would you introduce your family and friends who are here?
Sure, sure. Sure, sure. Sure, sure.
Aside from everybody in the room. Aside from everybody in the room. Aside from everybody in the room.
I'll do my best. I'll do my best. I'll do my best. My mother, stepfather, my wife and two kids, my mother-in-law, father-in-law, my second My mother, stepfather, my wife and two kids, my mother-in-law, father-in-law, my second My mother, stepfather, my wife and two kids, my mother-in-law, father-in-law, my second mother and family and their son-in-law. mother and family and their son-in-law. mother and family and their son-in-law. And then I see a lot of my first supervisors, former supervisors, mentors, former chiefs, And then I see a lot of my first supervisors, former supervisors, mentors, former chiefs, And then I see a lot of my first supervisors, former supervisors, mentors, former chiefs, and my whole Skokie family. and my whole Skokie family. and my whole Skokie family. So thank you guys all for coming out. So thank you guys all for coming out. So thank you guys all for coming out.
Well, this is a very proud day for all of us. Well, this is a very proud day for all of us. Well, this is a very proud day for all of us. Many of us have seen you move up in the ranks and we've always been proud of the job that Many of us have seen you move up in the ranks and we've always been proud of the job that Many of us have seen you move up in the ranks and we've always been proud of the job that you've done for us. you've done for us. you've done for us. We're grateful to you for the job. We're grateful to you for the job. We're grateful to you for the job. As you probably are well aware, the community supports our police department and it's because As you probably are well aware, the community supports our police department and it's because As you probably are well aware, the community supports our police department and it's because of the leadership that we have had over these many years. of the leadership that we have had over these many years. of the leadership that we have had over these many years. We have two of our former chiefs with us. We have two of our former chiefs with us. We have two of our former chiefs with us. You can see from the turnout this evening that the men and women of the force have given You can see from the turnout this evening that the men and women of the force have given You can see from the turnout this evening that the men and women of the force have given you their support, as has the village board. you their support, as has the village board. you their support, as has the village board. We congratulate you and we look forward to working with you. We congratulate you and we look forward to working with you. We congratulate you and we look forward to working with you. And I might point out that, as you know, our police department is fully accredited And I might point out that, as you know, our police department is fully accredited And I might point out that, as you know, our police department is fully accredited across the board. across the board. across the board. And we've been proud of that because our fire department, our public works department And we've been proud of that because our fire department, our public works department And we've been proud of that because our fire department, our public works department are all accredited. are all accredited. are all accredited. Our board of health is board certified, only one of five in the entire state of Illinois. Our board of health is board certified, only one of five in the entire state of Illinois. Our board of health is board certified, only one of five in the entire state of Illinois. And that's because of the hard work that you've done, the chiefs before you have done, And that's because of the hard work that you've done, the chiefs before you have done, And that's because of the hard work that you've done, the chiefs before you have done, and all of the men and women of our department. and all of the men and women of our department. and all of the men and women of our department. I know I, and I know I'm joined by my colleagues, we never get tired of repeating the good I know I, and I know I'm joined by my colleagues, we never get tired of repeating the good I know I, and I know I'm joined by my colleagues, we never get tired of repeating the good work that you've done. work that you've done. work that you've done. And the triennial survey that we take backs all of that up. And the triennial survey that we take backs all of that up. And the triennial survey that we take backs all of that up. The police department and the fire department all rank close or exceed the 90th percentile The police department and the fire department all rank close or exceed the 90th percentile The police department and the fire department all rank close or exceed the 90th percentile of approval from our citizens. of approval from our citizens. of approval from our citizens. I don't know, there are many communities that can say that. I don't know, there are many communities that can say that. I don't know, there are many communities that can say that. So congratulations. So congratulations. So congratulations. We look forward to continuing to work with you and congratulations and thank you to the We look forward to continuing to work with you and congratulations and thank you to the We look forward to continuing to work with you and congratulations and thank you to the men and women of the Skokie Police Department. men and women of the Skokie Police Department. men and women of the Skokie Police Department. We honor you. We honor you. We honor you.
We appreciate the support that you always provide us and I appreciate everyone's support We appreciate the support that you always provide us and I appreciate everyone's support We appreciate the support that you always provide us and I appreciate everyone's support for coming out to me. for coming out to me. for coming out to me. So thank you. So thank you. So thank you.
And maybe what we'll do is we'll take a short break because I suspect there were And maybe what we'll do is we'll take a short break because I suspect there were And maybe what we'll do is we'll take a short break because I suspect there were just a couple people here this evening who wanted to congratulate our new police chief. just a couple people here this evening who wanted to congratulate our new police chief. just a couple people here this evening who wanted to congratulate our new police chief. So let's take just a few minutes. So let's take just a few minutes. So let's take just a few minutes. be led by our good friend and colleague, Promod Shaw, our village clerk, in the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
The pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
In the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of the liberty and justice of all.
In the best of the liberty and justice of all.
This evening, Trustee Pure Slovan will participate in the meeting but will not be voting. Under, from what we understand from Illinois law, as it has been revised, if a trustee is out of town on non-business matters, they are not permitted to vote on items. If it were that somebody was out of town for business reasons, they would be permitted to devote and participate remotely. So on the advice of council, Trustee Pure Slovan this evening, with an abundance of caution, will participate but will not vote on any items. The meeting therefore will come to order and the clerk will please call the voting roll.
Trustee Sutker.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Coon.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Pure Slovan. Trustee Klein.
Here.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Here. We do have an agenda. First item is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order. Trustee Coon, seconded by Trustee Sutker. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Coon.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye. The motion passes. This evening I think we are probably in the safest room in the country. And I suspect the reason for that is the swearing-in of our new police chief. Is Chief Baker with us? I thought Chief Baker, Chief Scarpelli is with us this evening. Is Deputy Chief Ashler here? He comes to quite a few of the swearings in. And Deputy Chief Denise Franklin, I thought I saw. There we go. Denise, welcome. This evening, our clerk will do the honors and swear in our new police chief, Jesse Barnes. The village board meeting will return to order. Next item on our agenda is report of our village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor Van Duzen and village board. Good evening, everyone. There's one item on my agenda this evening and it's related to the Community Development Block Grant, commonly known as CDBG Public Hearing. Tonight is our first of three public hearings regarding the CDBG program. And Justin Malone is going to provide the update. He's our neighborhood and housing coordinator, as well as the CDBG administrator. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Justin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and happy new year. My name is Justin Malone and I'm with the village's Community Development Department. Tonight, I'm pleased to provide a summary of the upcoming 2024 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG as we call it, the program year, and share some important dates, as well as some updates on the 2023 program year, which is about three quarters of the way through as of today. So tonight is the first of three public meetings, as was mentioned, for the 2024 program year. And so at the January 16 meeting, we're going to have our applicants for the CDBG program come in and provide a short presentation about their projects and the services that they will be receiving money for, for the grant year. And then at the February 20 meeting, staff will present a draft version of our action plan for approval. And then, once approved, staff will be submitting that document to HUD for that final approval. And so just to recap the structure of this grant, there are three funding categories, all of which are aimed to provide assistance to low or moderate income Skokie residents. The first is for capital improvements, which can help with eligible construction projects on buildings or roads or housing rehabilitation and more. There is no cap for the amount that we decide to fund for this program. And the second category is for public services, which aim to provide financial assistance for the programs and social services that assist Skokie residents. This funding is limited to a 15% cap for total annual entitlement. And the final category is for planning and administration, which provides financial assistance for our in-house staffing projects and other regional participation. This funding is limited to a 20% cap of our total annual entitlement. So just a little status of the current program year. Currently, like I said, we're in the 2023 program year, about three quarters of the way through. And just to provide some highlights, the village's street resurfacing project wrapped up in early November, and we improved just over 3,000 feet of street conditions in income-eligible portions of Skokie on the streets of, parts of the streets of Keating, Kilpatrick, Davis, and Colmar. The village's sidewalk grant program will re-up again in the spring, once it warms up, so we can do the concrete there. And then both the village's home improvement program and the neighborhood enhancement pilot program have been of great interest to residents who qualify for these income-eligible home repairs. In support of our housing building stock, we are working with 15 households on home improvement projects. Additionally, we are working with multiple applicants for our neighborhood enhancement pilot program, representing five multifamily buildings that would benefit from such eligible home repairs. And overall, we've seen a lot of strong interest and investments on the exterior of their buildings, things that promote sustainability, such as new windows and doors and roof, which are, you know, very common, I would say. And finally, the funding we provide for our public service recipients will wrap up in the, the third quarter wraps up on February 10. As you may recall, we have moved forward focusing, or moved toward focusing on providing financial assistance for complete projects, as opposed to funding projects piecemeal. This means that we did ask for the minimum grant request to be set at $10,000. And for the 2023 program year, just to put it into context, we did receive about $550,000 in grant entitlement. And so hopefully, we're anticipating the same amount this year, somewhere between 500,000 and 600,000. And we'll get that money in the spring. And so our next steps are just for staff to review the applications for the 2024 program year. We had those due on December 22, right before the holiday. And we did receive over $850,000 in funding requests this year. And as I mentioned before, at the January 16 public meeting, we'll have our applicants come and do their proposals and presentations. And then you'll see me again on the 20th of February to present the draft action plan. And we have to submit that plan to HUD in early to mid-March to allow them to have a 45-day approval, so we can get our program year started on May 1. So that's the end of my presentation. And I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
So would you just quickly summarize the calendar again? There were three meetings, and this is the first of three. Is that correct?
Yes. So there are required numbers of public meetings for the CDBG program. And we're going to have the first one today, so we have any kind of public input that we, that anybody wants to share. The next one, we'll have our applicants come and do a very quick presentation on what they plan on doing with the funding that we may provide to them. And then we do a lot of work and try to get together our action plan and get that presented to you all for approval before we can give it to HUD.
So just so I can make sure everybody is well aware, Tuesday, January 16 probably will be the coldest day of the year, and maybe we will get six inches of snow. It always, it never fails at the night we ask the, propose, the presenters to come into the village board. It's always a terrible weather night. So dress, prepare to be dressed warm if you're coming on the 16th. Any comments or questions? Trustee Robinson?
Oh, that's great. You talked about the 16th. Let's not do that. That's my birthday.
We'll put in parentheses then, trustee Robinson's birthday. You'll be 21 this year? Not quite, not quite. Well, happy birthday, Eryland. Any comments or questions? If not, thank you.
And that completes my report this evening.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is report of our corporation counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one on the corporation counsel's agenda has already been adopted with the consent denda earlier this evening. Item two, or excuse me, item B is an ordinance up for second reading. This ordinance will establish the compensation for the village manager, deputy village clerk, corporation counsel, and assistant corporation councils for fiscal year 2024 pursuant to Chapter Two, Article Three of the Skokie Village Code. This ordinance is consistent with the mayor and board of trustees' directions during the budget planning for FY 2024 village budget, including cost of living adjustments and one salary adjustment to achieve parity.
A motion is in order, trustee seconded by trustee Klein. Are there any comments or questions? Nat?
I do.
Yes?
All right. Colleagues, I expressed a lot of concerns about this ordinance at our last meeting, because this ordinance provides continued employment and pay increases to our entire legal department, despite some major issues, despite some major conflicts of interest between elected officials on the board and appointed officials in our legal department, despite some major misconduct involving our legal department and attempts at voter and candidate suppression, and despite the failure of some of our village attorneys to provide us with adequate legal services. Colleagues, I want to walk through these concerns and again encourage you to recuse yourselves from this vote. But first, I'd like to again address the process concern. As I pointed out at our last meeting, we are not following our own process for this ordinance. Historically, the village board has always conducted performance reviews of our village manager and corporation counsel before proceeding with a compensation ordinance, just like we hold budget hearings before approving our annual budget. We have completely skipped performance reviews ahead of this vote tonight. I did not really get an answer last time, so I want to ask again, why are we not conducting performance reviews of our village manager and corporation counsel ahead of this ordinance?
It is, it's up to the village board to decide. This is solely compensation. During the budget, during this upcoming fiscal year, we will have an executive session taking up the village manager and the corporation counsel.
Mayor, I have a question. As far as just COLA across the board, what other village staff employees get the annual increase?
That's already been approved.
Like, I just, for the record, I'm just curious to know.
All of the village employees got a cost of living, which is the same, the cost of living for the legal staff is the same as all of the other employees in the village. There's no difference. All this, all this does is reflect a cost of living increase plus the one parity adjustment. That's all. Nothing else.
And I know there's union contracts with our police and fire, for example. So they don't get the COLA, right? They get what's based on their years of service and whatever has been.
Well, they also get, they get a cost of living as prescribed in the contract. The contract outlines, were they three-year contracts?
One was four. So they're about 3% in the contract. How many were there? They're about three years.
Three-year contracts, and the COLA was 3% in the contract. So all we did is, we took the percentage that police and fire would be getting and gave it across the board to all employees, 3%.
So a question about, like, an appraisal or performance review? I know we do, do the performance reviews for each of the departments during the budget process. We talk about goals, we talk about year reviews. Is that, is that an appropriate time, since it is in public forum, to have those conversations about goals or lack thereof from the departments?
Yeah. And in April, as we're going through the budget, the manager and the corporation counsel will each make a presentation to the board as well.
Thanks.
Trustee Coon.
Since the COLA adjustment is going to be effective May 1, 2023, through April 30, 2024, is there any concern about timing in terms of when we do the COLA adjustments for the appointed officials?
Not particularly. We can do it at any time. It's not unusual to do it as part of when we take up the entire budget. We have at times done it like we're doing it, you know?
Colleagues, I would greatly appreciate an opportunity for us to follow our normal process and have an opportunity, these performance reviews, in which we're not really discussing the departments as a whole, but we are discussing the performance and conduct of specific employees. I, I know many of you have spoken in the past at length about how much you value process. So I do, I do want to give the board another opportunity to follow best practices here and, and continue what we've done in the past. I move that we table this ordinance until we have conducted our annual performance reviews of our village manager and corporation counsel, just as the village board has always done in the past.
The motion dies for lack of a second.
All right. Since I don't have an opportunity to discuss privately performance and conduct of our corporation counsel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue. Before, if we're proceeding tonight, we have to discuss conflicts of interest. I have printed off for all of you the section of our code of ethics concerning conflicts of interest, so you can see the section that all of you are about to violate if you vote on this ordinance tonight. Pass this down. Colleagues, you are, this ordinance is more than just COLA increases. This is fundamentally about continued employment. Colleagues, you are about to steer roughly $400,000 of public money to your own political campaign leaders, individuals that you have very strong personal and political relationships with outside of village hall. From my perspective, this is a clear case of political hiring, since you are actively using your positions as elected officials to appoint your own campaign leaders to high-paying positions in our legal department. I have some questions. Let's start with conflicts of interest involving money. Members of our legal department, namely corporation counsel's Lord J. McCarthy, have repeatedly made campaign donations to the six of you. They have solicited campaign donations for you. They have even sponsored and organized political fundraisers for you. Assistant corporation counsel McCarthy was the literal chair of your election campaign. So I'm going to ask a very open-ended question that can be answered by any of you. Why are you not recusing yourselves from this vote to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest?
If they were to hold a coffee for a Democratic candidate, would that be a conflict of interest? Is it a, there is no conflict of interest for somebody to participate in the electoral system. If you believe, as both Lord J. McCarthy do, in the campaign promises that were made by the village board, there certainly is nothing wrong, there is no conflict of interest in supporting candidates, whether they be Democrat, they be Republican. The village board makes policy, and it's up to the manager with the advice and counsel of the legal department to administer and put that policy into effect. That is how the system works. And it's called the council-manager form of government. That is how it has worked.
Respectfully, Mayor, I'm not speaking about conflicts of interest, about our village attorneys. I'm speaking about the conflicts of interest of the people voting on this ordinance tonight.
There's no conflict of interest.
It would be a tremendous conflict of interest to essentially reward employees for their political work outside of village hall with public employment and pay increases.
That is not a conflict of interest, any more than the president of the United States appointing people who supported his campaign to the cabinet. Look at the cabinet of President Biden, President Trump, President Bush, Clinton. Go back.
Trustee Johnson, I have repeatedly heard your allegations against me, the mayor, corporation counsel, and my fellow trustees. The Ethics Commission also heard your complaints and has dismissed them. I find your continued repetition of the same comments to be a distraction from the real, important work the village needs to get done. It's time to move on. Thank you.
Let's talk, if, if no member of the board will acknowledge their conflicts of interest, let's talk about the misconduct involving our legal department. Colleagues, I have repeatedly shared with all of you the story of how corporation counsel's Lord J. McCarthy personally attempted to bribe and threaten me when I was a candidate for office, including offering me a village commission seat in exchange for not running. At our last meeting, trustee Klein publicly confirmed that he knew about this and thought that it was a good idea. So this is a serious question for the board, because I would also like to move on from these issues. Colleagues, what are any of you doing to prevent something like this from happening again?
The Ethics Commission heard your complaint, unanimously dismissed it as, as being frivolous and without, without merit. You keep making the same complaint. It keeps getting dismissed. It's time, as my colleague has just said, to move on and get on with the substance of the work of the village.
Colleagues, Mayor Van Duzen collaborated with village attorneys last year to attempt to block an entire voter-initiated referendum movement from access to the ballot. This happened very publicly. I also would like to move on, so I will ask, what are any of you doing to prevent?
You did the same thing.
Excuse me?
You did the very same thing.
I don't understand.
You came to me and you said, and you and I talked about, at your urging, putting three items on the agenda for the village board. Yes, you did.
I'm sorry, this is...
This is in the order. I thought we were discussing salaries.
And continued, and continued employment.
You're out of order. The item is on salaries, period.
All right. It's on continued employment as well. Colleagues, at our last meeting, I argued that our politicized legal department often fails to give us the legal advice that we actually need. For example, I mentioned how we've been investigated repeatedly by the Illinois Attorney General's Office because of our open meetings violations. Colleagues, do any of you have any concerns whatsoever about the legal advice and services that we are receiving from our appointed village attorneys?
And this has to do with salaries?
This has to do with their continued employment.
If there are no other...
I do have some more. Here's what I'm gonna do. Colleagues, I am not going to participate in this vote tonight. The six of you are about to majorly violate our code of ethics, and I am not going to be here when you do it. When you vote to rehire the attorneys that personally attempted to bribe and threaten me when I was a candidate for office, please do not expect me to be here when you do it. I'm walking out tonight, colleagues. I'm not walking out in anger. I am walking out in protest of the overt political corruption in our legal department, corruption that every single one of you is actively covering up. Colleagues, your conflicts of interest with some of our village attorneys are clearly impairing your judgment and your actions in the performance of your official duties, and it is alarming. Colleagues, here's what I'm going to do. When I return at our next meeting on January 16 here, for as long as it is needed, at the end of every single village board meeting, I am going to leave the dais and I will give public comments from the public podium. Starting at our next meeting, I will be providing you and the public with short, three-minute presentations about the long history of political corruption in our legal department. I know that some of you are tired of me speaking about this, but I will be speaking about this at every village board meeting until we have a nonpartisan legal department, which we are in desperate need of. Colleagues, I am walking out of meeting in protest of your actions. I say goodbye to you all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name, please. Thank you. Yes, sir. Name, please.
Excuse me, may I ask one before you go to the public? Just one point. At the last meeting, Mr. Johnson said that I suffer from conflict avoidance. And is leaving the dais conflict avoidance?
It's petulant.
I have a question for clarification. When Trustee Johnson is talking about the ordinance that we're taking on tonight as far as the rehiring of our appointed officials, they're currently under contract as well, correct?
John has a contract. The Corporation Counsel does not.
Okay. And then what we're looking at and we're voting on today is purely based on the cost-of-living adjustment as well as the salary parity adjustment.
That's it. That's it.
This has nothing to do with performance and appraisal?
No. Correct. It's exactly as it says right in the ordinance. Yes?
Thank you. My name is Brian Levinson, and I had hoped that Trustee Johnson would not have walked off the dais prior to my comments. And if he cannot hear me, then I hope he hears this on the recording or watches it on the recording. I've been privileged to appear before this Board numerous times. It hasn't involved community member and supportive projects. They've improved the village in many different ways. Every project I've been involved with in Skokie in the roles of volunteer for various nonprofits. My comments tonight are somewhat out of character for me, but I feel the need to share them, and I beg your indulgence in doing so. I've had the opportunity as both a community volunteer and business professional to interact with many municipalities across the state. I am proud to say that Skokie has been one of the most, if not the most visionary municipality I've ever dealt with. The vision of the staff, the commissioners, and the elected officials has resulted in the village a year after year, creates a village that supports its residents, businesses, and nonprofits. Skokie is a guiding light for other towns. Unfortunately, there's one recently elected commissioner who has chosen to use the dais in front of me as a platform not for the improvement of the village, but for a platform for a personal agenda. This commissioner, meeting after meeting, hijacks the matter at hand to repeatedly make accusations that have no basis. He attacks staff and trustees and has included the public as well. The notion that there is a giant conspiracy in the village between staff, trustees, and political donors is absurd. The accusations are nothing short of slander and libel. Trying to cripple this body with these accusations is the only thing that should be addressed as unethical. The desire to impede the ongoing business of the village is the opposite of what a trustee is charged to do. I am a politically engaged citizen. I work on behalf of candidates. I financially support candidates, and I get out the vote for candidates that best serve their offices and their constituents. That's called being a good citizen. Trustee Johnson, I can't address you face-to-face because you chose to step out. I'm not validating your allegation that Corporate Counsel, quote-unquote, bribed you by offering you a commission position instead of running for office, but maybe learning how to legislate before you ran for office would have been the best thing to do. Last meeting, you threatened to walk out if you didn't get your way. Apparently, that's what you chose him to do instead of legislate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Callie Folk, and I am here to express my opposition to this ordinance, but also more generally to discuss the reputation and ethics of this Board as a whole. But to be honest, I feel like there is no point. Over the past few years, I have seen many people speak out in front of you, good, intelligent people with evidence to support their position, and yet you just refuse to listen. People pour their hearts out to you, and nearly every time, it's a 6-1 vote. There are a few of you on this Board who have been lost causes for a long time because you've made your position clear through your actions, such as turning your chair around during public comment. Hello, Trustee Klein.
Hello.
But there are a few of you who will talk the talk about listening to people and taking all views into consideration. You claimed you would bring a different perspective because you represent historically underrepresented groups, but when it comes down to it, you have not done this. This ordinance is just another item in a longstanding list of grievances that I and many others have had with this Board. On multiple occasions through the past few years, the village has used taxpayer money to engage outside counsel to review legal matters. This makes the current counsel look inadequate. So why vote on compensation without even doing a full performance review? And there have been serious allegations of misconduct made against the counsel that were not diligently investigated, not to mention all the investigations by the Attorney General's Office. And despite what you may say, it is a clear conflict of interest to vote on the employment of people who have made political contributions to your campaign. I am a government employee myself. It's not exactly the same. But as a government employee, we have rules about what political activity we can and cannot do. I think a common sense ethics rule should be recusal, not only when there's actual bias, but when there's an appearance of bias too. That's the rule in our court system anyway. One of the things that kept coming up last meeting is everything that the counsel and the mayor did was done legally. Maybe so. But just because something is legal does not make it right. Laws change all the time. Last meeting, you debated Trustee Johnson's allegations of bribery. That was a distraction, if you want to talk about distractions, because whether or not his allegations are true is actually irrelevant to the issue of conflict of interest. It's obvious that you want to get in the weeds about this allegation to avoid discussing the fact that, at the very least, your conduct gives the appearance of financial, political, and ethical impropriety because of the fact that the very people the counsel contributed money to are the ones who are not only going to be deciding whether to hire him, but whether to adjust their salary. You are being willfully obtuse by ignoring that. Nearly two years ago, I stood before this Board, and I said I would personally campaign against any trustee that voted in favor of her.
Ms. Folk?
I'm sure you all disregarded that.
Ms. Folk, your time is up.
Okay. Well, all I will say is that you will be remembered as a board who caused the entire village to reform the electoral system.
Thank you.
Because of your conduct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steve Franklin. My wife Cindy and I have been residents of Skokie for 34 years. In the community, I'm a member of the village's Economic Development Commission and the North Shore Center for the Performing Arts Foundation Board. I'm a past president of both Skokie Valley Kiwanis and Temple Beth Israel. My interest with the Skokie Village Board is in ensuring Skokie's continued evolution is a welcoming, attractive, and well-functioning place to live. As a longtime trustee and village clerk, Promote Shaw has been a big part of making this goal a reality. Cindy and I congratulate Promote and wish him every happiness in his retirement. I'm directing these next comments to, I guess, Trustee Johnson's empty chair. For the past many, many months, Trustee Johnson has been pursuing a vendetta initially against the village of Skokie's legal department and now extended to the mayor and your fellow trustees. You, Trustee Johnson, have continued to do this, even though the village's Ethics Committee has heard your claims and subsequently dismissed them on multiple occasions. Instead of desisting, you've responded by expanding the range of those you accuse such that now nearly everyone on the dais, except Trustee Johnson, is presented as a member of a conspiracy to defraud the public of honest services. I know and deeply respect each of the people Trustee Johnson disparages. Together, they've contributed decades of personal service to the exceptional quality of life enjoyed in our village. To my mind, Trustee Johnson's unworthy and insulting accusation of fellow public officials echoes the late disgraced Republican Senator Joseph McCarthy of Minnesota. Recall that after four years of his making wild, vicious attacks on fellow officials in the early 1950s, McCarthy's career collapsed after he was brought up short by U.S. Army Attorney Joseph Nye Welch. At a Senate Subcommittee hearing in 1954, Welch asked McCarthy finally and memorably, "Have you no sense of decency, sir? At long last, have you left no sense of decency?" Closing the Village Board's December 18 meeting, Trustee Johnson said in reference to a village staff salary motion, and here I'm quoting, "At our next meeting, if this vote goes through, I am walking out of this chamber in protest of the blatant political corruption in our legal department." After Mayor Van Dusen acknowledged this statement, Trustee Johnson repeated, "At our next meeting, if this Board votes to perpetuate the political corruption in our legal department, I'm walking out in protest. Mark my words." So, okay, I've marked his words, and of course, he's walked out. I can't predict how the Board will vote, but in the event it does vote in support of the salary motion, I hope that Trustee Johnson will indeed prove to be a man of his word, that he will take that walk, that he will then please make it a very long and reflective one. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alan Kotler. I'm a Skokie resident. Andrei Wyshynski, a Stalinist-era Soviet judge, once said, "Give me the man, and I'll find you the crime." This is what Trustee Johnson has been doing for the past few months, and it has just broken my heart to see the village I love so much, Skokie, been torn apart by baseless claims and vendettas that have been proven false. And I just want to stand against that, and I want to thank the village trustees who care about the governance of the village and care about working together to achieve results, achieve the kind of results that have made Skokie a wonderful place to live in, a place I've lived in my entire life. I've lived in the same house my whole life. And thank you for showing your love for Skokie and caring about working together and seeing the best in each other. And I especially want to thank Mayor Van Dusen. I very much look up to you as a man of integrity. And I wish you guys to continue the good work you're doing and to stay strong in the face of the political winds that are very scary and dangerous, that unfortunately I see it all around the country, not just here. There's a lot of people who pour out their personal issues through politics, and they make previously enjoyable, pleasant places unlivable. And I just wish everyone of all political persuasions to keep having the heart and the courage and the faith to stay strong. So thank you so much to the village trustees who are here today.
My name is Emma Yamauchi. I'm a resident of Skokie and a retired Foreign Service officer. So I know full well what one of the previous speakers referred to, there being a clear line between public service and private political activities. I agree with one of the other former, previous speakers. I wish Trustee Johnson had not walked out, primarily because it leaves the floor open to whatever the folks on the dais want to do, because you do seem to vote as a block. We would have a lot more faith in the Ethics Commission and its decisions if it hadn't gotten us into the mess with the State Attorney General's Office, if it hadn't cost the taxpayers $30,000 to defend itself to not comply with a non-binding resolution of the case, which has since progressed to now being a binding resolution. So that was $30,000 down the drain. So that is one...
The unbinding...
Pardon me?
The unbinding opinion did not become a binding opinion. They're entirely separate. And the binding opinion...
All right, if it did...
No, wait. No, wait.
Okay, no, I'm happy to retract that part, but it does not change the $30,000 that we spent. My point is that we would have more faith in the Ethics Commission if it hadn't gotten us into the mess to begin with. So, yes, people will be voting in 2025, and between 55% and 60% of the people voting in Skokie voted for those three electoral referendums. And there was a reason for that, because people are tired of the non-transparency, the unaccountability, and the irregularity that we see at these meetings. Everything being brushed off because it is indeed a tyranny of the majority. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Marcus. I'm a Skokie resident, and I've never attended one of these before. I've never even, like, watched one on my computer. I don't know anybody up on the dais. I've never met any of you. And I guess I came tonight out of a sense of curiosity, and I suppose I feel like I'm gonna be leaving a little bit disappointed. I think I had assumed that the business of the village would be perhaps dealt with a little... with a bit more maturity and professionalism, and some of the silliness, you know, that I witnessed a few minutes ago. I haven't seen one of these before. I guess now I know what some of the business of the village can look like. I only wanted to note that it would be very challenging for me to sit behind a dais right now and be yelled at and barked at and pointed at and have my credibility challenged when I'm trying to service my community. So regardless of... I'm not intimately familiar with the details of the ethics investigations. It sounds like they've been dealt with, or some of the questions that have been raised here. My sense is that if you yell the word corruption loudly enough over and over again, you force people to defend against it, even while saying the word colleague over and over again as well. But I guess just from somebody who lives in Skokie, thank you for sitting there while people bark at you. I wish it wasn't necessary.
Thank you. Call the role, please.
Trustee Suttor?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Coon?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson Isabson? Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye. The motion passes.
That concludes the Corporation Counsel's report.
Thank you. Next item is an item which we all have very mixed feelings, I think. I think I look at everybody in the audience, and I think you all know who I'm talking about.
Mayor, sorry, before we get to that, can we get to an item of old business? Oh, sorry.
Your item is coming up immediately after this.
Okay.
This evening, we honor and we thank our good friend, a gentleman always, but always a very good friend, one of the nicest and efficient human beings you'll ever want to meet, our village clerk, Promote Shaw. And I would like to read a proclamation because I think it expresses the way we all feel about Promote. Whereas Promote Shaw embodies the sentiment, Skokie welcomes everyone and has dedicated his time in office to offering best-in-class municipal services to all who visit Village Hall. And whereas Promote served the village of Skokie as a trustee from May 4th, 2009, until April 22nd, 2013, when he was elected village clerk. And whereas, as village clerk, Promote administered the village's local election services, as well as the village's public records, passport services, real estate transfer stamp program, public service referrals, temporary parking applications, and so much more. And whereas Promote Shaw has dedicated his life to the benefit of our community for more than 30 years with his wife, Usha, and they have raised their two sons, Mahir and Mahul, through the village of Skokie school system. And whereas Promote has a longstanding relationship with our Indian community, many of who are here with us this evening, was appointed Niles Township Collector in 1999 and was elected to that position in 2001, and in 2005 was elected a Niles Township trustee. Promote has also been a proud member of both the Skokie Kiwanis and Lions Clubs for over 10 years. And whereas Promote is retiring as Skokie village clerk and is present at Village Board meetings, as well on a daily basis at Village Hall, will be greatly missed. Now therefore, I, George Van Dusen, Mayor of the village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim, on behalf of the residents and businesses of this great village, our heartfelt congratulations for Promote's many years of dedication to public service that has made Skokie a wonderful community in which to live, work, and to raise a family. Promote, we wish you and your family continued good health and happiness in retirement. Promod, we wish you and your family continued good health and happiness in retirement. And just on a personal note, I will miss coming into Village Hall, walking by Promod’s office, and without fail, he not only always has a smile and a friendly greeting, but also you can count on him, almost on a daily basis, to just come upstairs and poke his head in the door and say, “What’s new?” And when you invite Promod in, you feel the warmth all the time. He’s just that kind of person. And so, Promod, we will miss you, and we hope that you will come back for village board meetings. We have a little ways to go yet, but I would like to make just a couple presentations and then call on some colleagues for their remarks. You will notice, I think this evening, you may have noticed your identification.
Yeah, I thought I’m gone already.
That’s a remembrance. I hope every time you look at it, you’ll have fond memories of your service, not just in the village, 13 years, but in the township as well. And this is a plaque commemorating the proclamation. And thank you for everything. Trustee Sutker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I will have lots of memories.
Trustee Sutker.
Promod, thank you for your long service to this community as Niles Township Collector, a Niles Township trustee, a Village of Skokie trustee, and as the village clerk. In all your roles, you have served with intelligence, thoughtfulness, and grace. I will miss you on the board and will always consider you a friend of the family. Best wishes to you in your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Klein.
I have had the honor to work with you for more years than neither of us want to remember. But if there was a warmer, kinder human being, I have yet to meet him. So, thank you for being my friend. I do appreciate it.
I appreciate it. And just on a personal little side note, we have a little thing that because he’s like the only, one of the only people I’m taller than, I always call him my son. Trustee Coon.
Promod, as an Asian American, I have been raised to respect my elders. But as a strong-willed American, I have challenged that notion and believe that there’s a difference between respect that is demanded and respect that is earned. You have earned my respect. It has been an honor working beside you. You have paved the way for someone like me to be here today, and I thank you for that. You have demonstrated integrity, moved with humility, and brought harmony to the community in multiple roles that you’ve served here, leading up to village clerk. So, thank you for your service, and happy retirement to you and your family.
Trustee Robinson.
I’ll just add, everything that has been said already, I just want to reiterate that, but just thank you for your humanity. I mean, your sincerity and honesty and your authentic human self is what really inspires me. So, thank you for your service and everything that you’ve done, and we’ll definitely stay in touch.
And Promod, your service has been recognized beyond the village of Skokie. It gives me very great pleasure to introduce Senator Ram Vilivalum and Representative Kela Kevin Alakal. Ram and Kevin.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor, for that introduction. And obviously, we’re also here with Cook County Commissioner Josina Marita. Happy New Year, first and foremost. And thank you, on a broader note, for your leadership and collaboration in representing Skokie. It’s because of our conversations that I know what to advocate for in Springfield, and very appreciative of that. I’m here, you know, today, and much has been said already about Clerk Shaw, but I’m here to celebrate with everyone my friend, my quote-unquote uncle, my, one of my mentors that has, I think, had a huge impact on my life and a huge impact as to the reason I’m standing here today. I’m here with Representative Kevin Olkell. I’m allowing the House member to read the proclamation just for today. So, he’ll read that. But it suffice to say that from an early age, I was able, I had the great fortune and blessing to interact with Promod Uncle. And I was able to see him and the work that he has done for the community, for at large, the Skokie community, and also for the Indian-American community. I was able to understand the importance of public service. I was able to understand the importance of humanity, as trustee Robinson mentioned. I was able to convince my mother to send me to George Washington University to get a degree in political science because somehow, somewhere in her mind, she’s like, if Promod Shaw is okay with going into this thing, then maybe it’s okay for my son, too. And so, I have learned a great deal from you, and you are the reason that I am where I am today. And I think about that as I was standing there, but, you know, from time to time. And I’m proud to be the first Indian-American elected to the Illinois General Assembly. It was going to happen at some point. I think the work that you have done in our community and civic, for civic engagement to instill in people the importance of representation in government, not just for the Indian-American community, but for every community, is a reason that that sped up. And now, we have three Indian-Americans in the Illinois General Assembly. And you are the pioneer of that in a lot of ways. And so, I look to you as someone that is incredibly special in my life, and I can’t thank you enough. You know, ask me in a few years, and maybe I will say, oh, Promod Uncle, I’m in Springfield still. I need to go home, you know? But the reality is, what I do is a blessing for the 217,000 people I represent. And I do think about you, unknownst to you, because there are a lot of moments where this job requires calm, cool, collectedness, and that’s what you embody. And so, I have, I’m going to get a bracelet that says, “What would Promod Uncle do?” So, I can refer to that. So, thank you again for all of your service. Thank you for being one of my mentors. And I can’t, I can’t wait to see you at the next Skokie Village Board meeting because apparently they want you to come back, so, thank you.
Can’t really put into better words what the senator said about what you mean to us in this community. I am just, it’s an incredible privilege and honor to be here today to celebrate your incredible career in public service. I’m a product of Skokie. I was born and raised in this community. This community has made me into the person that I am today, and I’m so grateful for all the work that you have done to make Skokie what it is today, this beautiful community. And I am just so grateful. We know that we wouldn’t be here if it weren’t for people like yourself who paved the way for us. But you didn’t just pave the way. You reached back and you lifted so many of us. And we stand on the soldiers of, shoulders of giants, giants like yourself. And so, it’s, again, an incredible privilege to be able to celebrate you. And I also want to promise you that we will continue your legacy and ensure that we’re going to continue to fight for Skokie, for the state of Illinois, for our community, and carry your legacy with us. So, we’re just really grateful for all that you’ve done. So, I’m going to read this proclamation, a joint proclamation from both Senator Vilivalum and myself. Proclamation presented by State Senator Ram Vilivalum and State Representative Kevin Olkell congratulating Promod Shaw on his retirement on this second day of January 2024. Whereas, the members of the Illinois General Assembly are honored to congratulate Skokie village clerk Promod Shaw on the occasion of his retirement on January 2nd, 2024. And whereas Clerk Shaw was one of the first Indian-Americans in elected office in the state of Illinois. And whereas Clerk Shaw served as the Niles Township Collector from 1999 to 2005, when he was elected Niles Township trustee. And whereas Clerk Shaw served as the village of Skokie as trustee since 2009 and village clerk since 2013, dedicating more than two decades to public service in his community. And whereas Clerk Shaw served the village through local elections, overseeing voter registration and election services. And whereas Clerk Shaw also served the village of Skokie through the handlings of public records, passport services, real estate transfer stamp services, public service referrals, temporary accessible parking applications, and much more. And whereas Clerk Shaw also worked as a manager for Cyber Bridge International, a Skokie-based software and information technology consulting company. And whereas, prior to his service with the village of Skokie, Clerk Shaw obtained his master’s degree in chemistry from Gujarat University and attending the Indiana Northern School of Management. And whereas Clerk Shaw has lived in the Skokie community for more than 30 years together with his wife and two children, serving as a proud member of the village board and facilitating positive change across the community. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the members of the 103rd General Assembly of the state of Illinois that we congratulate Promod Shaw on his commitment to Skokie and his more than 20 years of service to the community, we wish him the best with his endeavors. And be it further proclaimed that a sub copy of this resolution be presented to Promod Shaw as a symbol of our esteem and respect.
And it gives me equally great pleasure to introduce our Cook County Commissioner, Josina Marita. Thank you for coming today.
I couldn’t miss it. When I think of Skokie, I don’t know if there’s anybody who is more beloved than Promod, including by my husband. We are actually in the middle of a vacation right now. Can you tell? And I don’t think that there’s anything else that my husband would let me leave in the middle of a vacation. I think my kids still think I’m in the bathroom right now. But he said, “Go,” because it’s Promod. And so, when I think of Promod, I just think of goodness. You know, I think that you have been a mentor to so many of us, the kindness and generosity of your spirit and the way that you treat everybody when they walk into Village Hall and go to the clerk’s office, there’s just a warmth and, you know, an openness that a diverse community like Skokie really needs. You know, you have not only served this community as a businessperson and civic roles, but you really have been a trailblazer and a mentor and a friend for so many of us. We wouldn’t be here without you, not just because you endorsed us or you did whatever, because you really believed in us. And we felt that. You were the first one to really believe in me. And so, when you look at, you know, a lifetime of public service, that’s amazing. But to have left, you know, such a mark in how all of us think about public service and leadership in a way that we really need right now, I can’t think of somebody who embodies the goodness and integrity in the face of so much conflict and negativity that we see in the world. And so, I really think of you as kind of our true north in the things that we do and guiding our decisions, what would Promod Uncle do? And so, we really thank you for all of that because, you know, the goodness that you do in everything that you’ve done for us, in public service and mentoring, you really have left a legacy. Again, I think all of us are proud to be a small part of your legacy, and all of that goodness is what really has made you great. And we thank you for being you and instilling a little piece of that in all of us. So, thank you, Promod. We love you.
Formally presented to you.
There will be a reception honoring Clerk Shaw directly following this evening’s board meeting. Just as you walk out, go to your right, and that will be the reception area. Speech, speech, speech. Promod, would you like to say a couple words?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
He can’t find his paper.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, thank you, Josina, Kevin, Ram. I’m just going to call you Ram.
You did that for 30 years, so.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Let me say a few words to my fellow board members. Mayor Van Duzen. It has been an incredible honor to serve with you for these 15 years at Skokie. Our friendship goes back decades in our community and political work. I always learn from your ideas and your vision for our village. I have seen it over and over, how you care about growth and safety of the village and that you speak with integrity and great energy. I see you, Wiki, see you and Wiki start early every day before anyone else come to the Village Hall. And I’m so proud of everything that we have accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to my fellow trustees, Edie and Ralph, whom I have served a long time, I’m proud of the things we have accomplished since 2009, 2013. We have collaborated in positive ways, and we have been creative to make Skokie a wonderful place and conduct business. We have always supported and trusted each other. So, I thank you. Thank you. To the trustees whom I have served last, what, almost three years now, I wish, I wish you success for the future of the village, that collaboration is better than accusations, and that we must assume the best of each other and not tear down each other in social media or in public meetings. I know you can do good work if you assume that everyone is here only to work for the common good. And Keith, I know you as Dr. Robinson from Niles North. Cam, we have known each other since you ran for Park District, so it’s been a pleasure working with you. And to John Lockerbie, Nick Wyatt, Michael Lorge, Barb, Jim, I, you are great friends, and I see you every day, how committed you are to working for Skokie with creative ideas and solutions to build Skokie up. And to all the department staff, you know, I have pleasure working- staff, you know, I have pleasure working with everyone, starting from community development. I see almost everyone every day or talk on the phone. Brian Angel there. I would visit every now and then upstairs, say hi to Johanna, not that often, but I would stop by if she's there. And then Justine and Paul and Marlene. So it's been a pleasure working with you. And I visit Finance Department every morning. I take my reports every morning, all the mail, and I'll say hello to everyone. Michelle, Christine, Carmina, Stella in the back, Katie, and of course Julian. I'll chat with him if he's there. In IT Department, I know they're really busy right now, but they're great. They're great. I speak with Itbal more often when I have problem with the computer or the system. Noor and Tomas, they're all great, great stuff. And then Mike Alexi in purchasing, he is great. Every time I ask him to do something with a smile, he'll take care of it. And Manager's Office, I'll say, "I'll talk to Lucy," almost every day. And she's my go-to person also. And I am on the phone with some residents and can't come up with anything, then I say, "Lucy, can you?" And she does. She does a great job. Alex, Philip, Stephanie, Josh is there too. Oh, okay. I see some retirees. So, you know, then I'll usually visit Engineering. Russ is there most of the time when I speak with him. HR, I'll talk to Ed, Deborah. I'll go down to check the mail, and I'll say hello to whoever is the Health Department, Human Services, or, you know, Environmental Department. I transfer calls to Public Works every now and then when they have some question about, you know, garbage pickup or anything like that. Of course, it's nice to work with our Police Department and Fire Department. Everyone, you know, whenever I ask for help, I'll get great response for their assistance. So it's been a pleasure. Thank you, Karen, for being here today. And Steel, and Tom, and Cindy. I have, and to Deputy Clerk Sylvia Luke. Sylvia, I could not have done, could not have gotten through this without you. The people of Skokie owe you a great thank you. And I am relieved that you're going to stay on. And to my fellow Skokie residents, I want to thank you for the trust you have put in me, not just as a clerk, but as a former village trustee and township official. The people I have met and worked with prove that Skokie is a great and caring community. I know that our government is honest and dynamic, and that we have worked very, every day for you. A little bit briefly about how I got involved. So I'll start with, I got involved, I joined Indo-American Democratic Organization in 1986. Organization that was founded in 1980 by visionary community leaders like Philip Kalil, Matthew Koryakus, Ranjit Ganguly. And there I had opportunity to meet with federal, state, and local elected officials and started working on many campaigns, got to know many of them. And then I started volunteering with Niles Township Democratic Committee Man and Cook County Commissioner Edie, your father, Cal Sutker. And it was a pleasure working with him. And he's the one who really got me working. At his office, I'll call him and he says, "Come on over at 6:00 a.m., first thing in the morning." So, but that was good experience. So I can't forget him. And then I joined Skokie Caucus Party and came to Village of Skokie. But I want to thank everyone for putting their trust in me and giving me opportunity to serve the community where I have lived for almost 47 years in the same house and raised my family. Many of my nephews are here today, nieces, and family members are present. I have many friends here. I see Rohit Bai, Promod Bai Josi, Sajjan Babubai and his family. So thank you. Thank you for your support. Lastly, my wife finally made it today. I'm so happy to see you. I wasn't sure, you know, when I left the house, whether she will be able to come today. And she wanted to come badly, but when I left, I wasn't sure. But I'd like to thank my wife, Usha, for her support throughout these years. I couldn't have done this myself. So I'm so grateful to you. Thank you. I wish everyone very happy New Year, and I'll see you in the neighborhood. Thank you.
That is the most I have ever heard Promod Shaw talked about. Promod, thank you very much for your service and your friendship. You will be missed. And a motion to appoint Deputy Clerk Sylvia Luke as the acting village clerk until a new clerk is sworn into office would be in order. Trustee Sutker, seconded by all of the members of the village board. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Coon?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Vendison?
Aye. The motion passes. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, since we all set up the issue of the draft Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, the Illinois Housing Development Authority has released a statewide report showing that Skokie has increased its share of affordable housing from 19.9% to 21.8%. While acknowledging the increase, I do believe that the times and values are shifting. We're having an inclusionary housing ordinance is pertinent and will set the appropriate expectations for developers who want to build in Skokie. There were questions that needed to be clarified, and many of us were not ready to move forward with the draft ordinance as proposed. However, over the past few weeks, I've had the opportunity to talk with you, Mayor, Corporation Council, and other trustees individually to gather different perspectives on how to establish a foundation that we can move forward on. I do believe that we need to start conservatively and use data to inform potential changes in the future. It won't be perfect. I recognize the shortcoming with some of the data points. But rather than doing nothing, establishing an inclusionary housing ordinance will now allow us to establish a baseline to define the data points that will continue to shape future policymaking around housing. So therefore, based on these conversations, I am recommending that Corporation Council would bring back the draft Inclusionary Housing Ordinance with the following changes. One, adjust the number of units required to be affordable, such that 5% for projects are required for units, for 11 units to 75 units, 7% for projects from 76 units to 100 units, 7% for projects that are above 101 units that receive any TIF funding or Cook County tax relief, and 10% for projects that are above 101 units that receive any TIF funding or Cook County tax relief. Second, that we create tiers for the fee and lieu option for a developer to pay into a trust fund. The tiers should be $100,000 per unit for projects with 11 to 110 units, and $150,000 per unit for projects with over 101 units. Third, adjust the period of affordability from 40 years to 25 years. Fourth, while the details and direction of how the trust fund is yet to be established, I'd like to clarify the language and how money set aside will be used. The housing renovation grant is a critical component of how the trust fund may be used, which aims to improve the conditions of Skokie's current affordable housing stock to support those properties getting in line with the latest health and safety codes such as ADA requirements and the Skokie Building Code. The trust fund will not be limited to renovation grants only. A significant portion of that funding will also be set aside for new housing development that is affordable. And fifth and finally, the current committee that has been developing the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan upon completion will continue to meet regularly to provide a report to the board annually regarding the general health and status of housing in the village.
If there's a consensus, we'll have the Corporation Council prepare that ordinance. And as you probably are aware, he's going to be having surgery. But I did talk to him. He knows about our conversations. And he will have the ordinance prepared. Hopefully, we can get it done in February sometime.
Thank you.
And everybody will have a chance to take a look at the draft. And so if that meets with your, if you would send me-
I can send you a copy of this.
A copy of that?
Yes.
We will see to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly. The next item, the concluding item this evening before the reception, is public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to address the village board?
Is it okay if I share my screen with the trustee who's? Trustee Pierce Sullivan, can you see the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Gradniki. And before I start with my prepared comments, I want to thank Trustee Coon for bringing back up the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And I think it's really important that I agree with you wholeheartedly about how even though our numbers have increased, the need for it has increased even more. So I would like to talk about microplastics. They're everywhere. They're finding them like in baby bottles, right? You think that it's okay to feed your kid formula. Well, guess what? You're also feeding them microplastic. Although you are also feeding them microplastic if you fill the water from your tap, because it's coming in your tap. And it's in your breast milk anyway. So what difference does it make? But it's in the tubes of your coffee maker and in the tank of your coffee maker and every other part of your coffee maker except for the glass carafe. It's in Arctic snow and it's everywhere else. And these microplastics, these tiny particles of plastic leach chemicals that have known carcinogens. They leach chemicals of other toxic properties such as impairing liver function or various other organ functions. Primary sources of microplastics, so there are primary sources and there are secondary sources of microplastics. The sources where microplastics are what is generated just as you're doing your business are car tires, which weigh in at the biggest 35%. And this information is coming from an exhibit that I saw, and I talked about that on the last slide. Fabrics, every time you wash your clothes, unless you wear only natural fiber clothing, you're generating microplastics and it's all going into the water. City dust and various other things. So spilled nodules are, nodules are the little like stock that they make the plastic from and they ship it. And during the shipping process, sometimes it spills. That's like 0.2% of all of the pieces of plastic that are in the ocean. It comes from road markings and recycling plastic actually generates microplastic that's then released into the air. So we cannot even recycle our way out of this problem. When you wash your plastic dishes, you're putting microplastics into the water. It's in cosmetics. It's in anything that comes in a plastic container. So car tires and also brake dust. But these are the ones that you guys can do something about. Secondary sources of microplastic are when you have like a plastic fork in a landfill and it slowly disintegrates into smaller and smaller pieces, which are microplastics, right? Didn't start out as microplastic, but that's where it ended up. And plastic bottles and plastic bags and fishing nets and packaging. We have tons and tons of packaging these days. Other trash that finds its way into the oceans. But these are the ones that you guys can do something about.
Okay, Lauren? Would you, but if you send me, send me the PowerPoint, I'll forward it on to all of the members of the board.
Okay, so I have what you can do, but I also want to have a shameless plug for this exhibit, which is fabulous and terrifying and very disturbing at the Museum of Science and Industry. And it's only through January 15th, so hurry up and get down to Hyde Park.
The Blue Paradox.
Yes.
Thank you. So you'll send it to me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Yamaguchi?
Actually, I just had a question for the board, and that is, we've been seeing all these news reports about buses of migrants just kind of like arriving in suburbs and stuff. And since I've missed some of the village board meetings, I didn't know if this had been discussed or if the village has a plan for accepting migrants or the village is gonna pass an ordinance about buses who drop off migrants that are not part of the kind of waystation system they have set up where they are designated drop-off points for the city. So that's my question.
The village manager, the police chief, the Corporation Council, myself have discussed the situation. We did accept migrants a year ago. And we saw to it that they got housed, that the children got sent to public school, and that they were, and we were in touch with the governor's office. We are a welcoming community. And we always treat people with dignity. But yes, we do, we do have a plan. You're welcome. Trustee Sutker?
I move we adjourn and celebrate Promod Shaw at his reception.